Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 6, 2019 State Board of Education Meeting. I'm Eric Davis, Chair of the Board, and I call this meeting to order. On Monday, Governor Cooper issued a proclamation declaring June as Safety Month in North Carolina. Given the recent tragedy in Virginia, he wants to ensure that each workplace is safe to allow state employees to focus on what we do best, making North Carolina a great place to live, work, play, and do business. The safety of the DIP and State Board staff is important to the Board, and we encourage you to participate in the Flag the Hazard campaign and report any issues immediately to the agency's staff coordinator. Safety is a priority, and you must feel safe to have a productive work-life. We welcome all Board members and advisors, staff, onsite visitors, online listeners, and Twitter followers, and remind all to follow the State Board of Education on Twitter at @edStateBoard_NC. I remind the audience and those listening that this body meets monthly with its official meeting scheduled for the first Thursday of the month. Committee meetings are typically held on Wednesday prior to the official meeting day. And I remind our onsite visitors and online listeners that you can follow the meeting online and see all of our materials by going to SBE Meetings at the NCPublicSchools.org website. Board members, you're reminded that it's our duty to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of this Board. Does any member of the Board know of any conflict of interest or any appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before us at this meeting? If so, please state them for the record, and if during the course of the meeting you become aware of an actual or apparent conflict of interest, please bring the matter to the attention of the Chair. It'll then be your duty to abstain from participating in discussion on the matter and from voting on the matter. And we'd like for the record to reflect that Mr. Buxton has recused himself from EICS I and III items referring to MENA School and CE Academy. Before I ask Mr. Buxton to lead us in the pledge, I'd like to ask... Oh, Amy, yes, Ms. White.
Mr. Chair, I also need to recuse myself on an item on the agenda today. Yesterday, I became aware that one of the schools that are presented to us by CSAB today for charter school approval is within a mile radius of commercial development property owned by my family. And due to the fact that charter schools often find themselves in the position of having to find new locations, I'd like to not participate in that discussion or that vote today.
Okay, so which item is that?
It's a Doral Academy. It's EICS III, which is the approval of charter school applications.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Any other items? Okay. Before I call on Mr. Buxton to lead us in the pledge, I'd like to ask each of us to pause for just a moment and remember, seventy-five years ago, in the early dawn darkness this day, the soldiers, sailors, and airmen of the Allied Expeditionary Force embarked on a great crusade to save our allies from the bigotry, hatred, and inequality that they faced. They parachuted deep into enemy lines in northern France, they scaled the cliffs of Point de Haup, and they stormed the beaches of Normandy. We'll never know the fear that they felt or the courage that they displayed, but it remains to us, the beneficiaries of their sacrifice, that each time we say this pledge, that we do so with gratitude for their service and even more with a renewed spirit of dedication to make the values that they fought for a reality in the public schools of North Carolina for every student in North Carolina. So, Mr. Buxton, at this time, would you lead us in the pledge?
I would lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. We now come to our special recognitions, a time on our agenda when we recognize significant awards, proclamations, resolutions, and those who make a difference in the lives of our public school students we serve each day. And the first item of special recognition is FAST NC. Today, we included an important mission of this Board. In September, we launched FAST NC Florence Aid to Students and Teachers of North Carolina, and on May 17th, we concluded the final round of applications. FAST NC was developed by bipartisan team of current and former state education leaders. The FAST NC Steering Committee members include State Board Chair, myself, State Superintendent Mark Johnson, former State Superintendent June Atkinson, Phil Kirk, former State Board Chair Henry Johnson, former Assistant U.S. Secretary of Education, and former State Superintendent Mike Ward. Dr. Ward chairs the Steering Committee. The purpose of FAST NC has been to provide funds and in-kind contributions to assist public school students and employees in recovering from the impact of Hurricane Florence. Priorities been given to school materials, equipment, supplies, and resources that aid students in being prepared for instruction and aid teachers in the restoration of high-quality learning environments. Helping our children and educators to recover from the storm and continue the processes of teaching and learning have been important steps in restoring their well-being and the well-being of their families and communities. This is our final recognition of school districts that have received FAST NC grants from the State Board's North Carolina Education Fund. We're honoring grant recipients from rounds nine through thirteen, and five districts receive grants during these rounds. Several of these districts have had multiple applicants. To introduce these districts, I'll call on former Chair of the State Board of Education, Mr. Phil Kirk. Mr. Kirk, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, I was fortunate to have dinner last night with Bill Covey, and he said to give you his sympathy, I mean, his congratulations and thank you for doing what you do. I go over to Chapel Hill, I'm trying to raise my, you know, abilities and so on. So, I go over to Chapel Hill every couple of months and have dinner with Bill and his wife and a couple of other people who live at the Cedars. Also, I'm the only one of the, well, Eric and I are the only two who are here today. Mike, from the FAST NC. Mike Ward is in Maui, I thought y'all would want to know that. He has a daughter and grandchildren in Maui, and he has to go over there once in a while to visit. I think he also has a contract to do work over there, too. He and the other members of the committee were sorry they couldn't be with you, particularly since this is our last time before you. First of all, as the Chairman said, we're extending checks to five districts that were awarded in rounds nine through thirteen. Columbus County Schools, eight FAST NC grants were awarded for the North Carolina Education Fund in response to applications submitted from teachers and principals from across the Columbus County School District. These grants total nearly, in this round, totaled nearly $9,000. A variety of equipment, materials, and instructional resources were covered by these grants. Jonathan Williams, Superintendent of the Columbus County Schools, had planned to be with us today, but he's with his colleagues and students who are suffering today due to the tragic loss of one of their wonderful teachers. New Hanover County Schools, schools and communities in North, New Hanover County sustained extensive damage. A FAST NC grant from the North Carolina Education Fund was awarded to the Media Center at Edwin A. Anderson Elementary School. This grant will replace library books and materials. Ms. Bernhard, the grant's author, is unable to be with us today, but sends her appreciation to the Board for these resources. Onslow County Schools, few districts experienced the devastation that the schools in Onslow County did. In rounds nine through thirteen, Queens Creek Elementary School and Hunters Creek Middle School received nearly $1,700 in FAST NC grants to replace instructional materials and supplies. Brent Anderson, Executive Director of Community Affairs for Onslow County Schools, is here on behalf of the district, if he would stand. Thank you, and we'll have y'all go up to the front for a photo op, thank you, for being here. Pamlico County Schools, Jeremy Johnson of Pamlico County Middle School submitted a grant application in round nine to FAST NC, and the school received nearly $9,000 from the Education Fund to replace classroom supplies and materials. Henry Rice, Director of Student Services for Pamlico County Schools, is here today representing the district. Thank you for being here. The Public Schools of Robinson County, the Public Schools of Robinson County received two FAST NC grants in rounds nine through thirteen. Over $3,100 in funding was awarded to Long Branch Elementary School to replace Media Center furnishings. An additional $2,500 was awarded to the school's social work program at Lumberton High School to provide resources for students. Dr. Shanita Wooton, Superintendent, is here today on behalf of her.
We're representing, we're representing Dr. Wooton.
Okay, share your name with us.
Edavall, with the School Library and Media Supervisor for the district, so thank you.
Sandy Carter, our Certification Supervisor.
Thank you for being with us. And Superintendent Johnson had to be in the legislature to meet with the key Senate, I believe, Senate Committee Chair, so I'm this morning, so I'm giving his remarks now. We want to pay special tribute to communities and schools that has been our partner in this district or in this project, raising funds and distributing funds that we recommended and that the Executive Committee and Board approved. So, they've been a real partner in assisting us in this effort. During this past year, we've received great support from a lot of people. Their support included the approval of spending of $350,000 in funds from the General Assembly. The State Board of Education's North Carolina Fund, our Education Fund benefited from these funds and literally hundreds of individual donations. You may remember that I upset some in my family by subtracting $25 from each of the grandchildren's Christmas presents in order to give that money to the fund and also to teach them the importance of giving. I think they've forgiven me. Our partner organization also received a lot of money from corporations and also business donations. And then we also had forty different education and business organizations that worked with us on this campaign, that pitched in, encouraged their members to contribute, and also to be in prayer and other ways of support. Grant applications came in steadily over the last months, and you approved sixty-eight grants from the North Carolina Education Fund totaling almost $400,000. Communities and schools funded another thirty-two recommendations that we had approved and y'all approved and forwarded to them totaling $520,000. So, and also school supplies and tens of thousands of books were donated. Side light on that is that a friend of our family that we met on the cruise a long time ago lives in California, and she's sent a note wanting to know if she could get books from different book clubs and contribute. Of course, I said yes, and then the devastating fires hit her section of California, but they still were able to send sixty books to North Carolina. Thanks to the work of Drew Fairchild and our colleagues at the Textbook Warehouse, multiple school districts in the storm-impacted region were able to receive these materials. So, in summary, FAST NC has proved a lot of things. It's proved that there's still room for bipartisan efforts in North Carolina. It's proved that people are generous when they know what the need is. And let me say that while we've sent out over a million dollars, there are many other organizations. We heard from a lot of people said, "I've already given to so-and-so," or whatever. So, we were just one of the efforts. Want to thank the Board and the Executive Committee, but also particularly the staff at DPI for all the time that they've spent working on this, and State Board also. We met every Tuesday morning by phone, thank goodness. We met every Tuesday morning to approve grants, and it's been a very rewarding experience. And so, in closing, just want to thank you for your cooperation, and if we'll call the three or four who are here today up in front for the presentation, thank you.
Please come forward and call each advisor with yours. Let's do one district at a time. Okay.
You stay in.
All right, you guys ready? One, two, three.
The check's under my eye.
I've had to make you look at them. I've had to. Thank you.
That's all you have is a ring right there.
Mr. Kirk, thank you again for, you always have a seat at the table in this Board, and we really appreciate your service on this. You don't get a vote, but you get a seat.
I told myself I wasn't going to tell any stories today, but you reminded me. So, that's your fault. We had a policy, which apparently you still do, that former Chairs could come back and speak at any time they wanted to to the Board. And Howard Hallworth, the late Howard Hallworth, who was very conscientious and diligent in following the work of education and so on, he came back about once a year. Sometimes, he always outlined the challenges and occasionally some solutions. But after I'd been off the State Board a year or two, somebody asked, "Well, I had not been back to speak to the State Board like Howard." And I said, "Well, because I don't have anything to say." And they said, "Well, that didn't stop you before."
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. All right. Next on our special recognitions is a recognition and thanks to two of our advisors who have given so much and continue to give so much to the public school students of North Carolina. First off, we'd like to recognize and thank Dr. Janet Mason, who unfortunately can't be here today because she's running a school district and doing the most important work we could be doing, but we'd like to express our thanks and appreciation to Dr. Mason. She's made many contributions to the Board and committees in so many different ways, but some of the most important is she always made sure that we were focused on making the decision that was in the best interest of our students. She did a terrific job of explaining the impact of our decisions on students and teachers and parents. And most of all, she so contributed to an effective and contributing partnership between the State Board and our frontline leaders, the local school system superintendents across North Carolina. So, on behalf of the Board, we'd like to express our great appreciation and thanks to Dr. Mason, not only for her service as an advisor to the Board, but for everyday service, being the type of leader that North Carolina so needs in our public school system. So, the next time you see Dr. Mason, give her a hug, shake her hand, and tell her how much we love her and appreciate her. Unfortunately, we have another recognition that we have to make, unfortunately for us, but very fortunately for some kindergarten students in one of our counties. Today, we bid farewell to Ms. Lisa Godwin, who's advised this Board for over two years as our Teacher Advisor of the Year, as our Teacher of the Year Advisor. Ms. Godwin leads with her heart and fights for justice even in tough, sometimes politically charged situations. Her guidance over the last two years has served to inform the Board, and I think even more to inspire the Board, to ensure equity for all educators and students, beginning with our youngest students, as their education foundation sets the stage for future learning. Ms. Godwin, there's so much more we could say in appreciation and thanks for what you mean to us and our students, but most of all, we just want to say thank you and we love you. Would you please come forward?
I lost my dad a couple of months before being named North Carolina Teacher of the Year, and then I just lost my mom a few months ago. But, you know, this work gave me renewed purpose, and it helped me reflect on the values and the morals and the, just the kind of person that my parents raised me to be. And it made me kind of rededicate myself to those ideals that they set inside of me. After my dad passed, we were packing up his things, and I found this. And if you can't see it, it's "A Vote for Bob Brown, Sanford City School Board, May 17, 1969." And he served as the Board Chairman for a two-year period as well, but this was the beginning of his journey. And over the course of my childhood and into my adulthood, people would come up to me and would comment about his time on the Board. If you know, 1969 was the days of desegregation. And my dad, my dad was about equality and equity before those were buzzwords. He believed with all of his heart that that was what was just and what was fair and what was supposed to happen under God's eyes. And so, I would hear stories of him on those days, standing in the doorways of schools, being spit on and hit because he believed in what he was doing, and he believed in those children that were going in those doors. I wanted to be like my dad. I wanted to be like my dad. And to be a part of this table for two years, a Board that is recognized in our state constitution because it is so vitally important and is such a bedrock of this state, I am so honored and I'm so privileged that I've had this opportunity. And I thank you so, so much for giving me a voice and for listening and for putting it with my heartfelt words that sometimes were not always politically correct, maybe in the eyes of our legislators, but it's what was just and it was what was right. And so, I thank you for letting me be that person. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, my brothers. Come here, Free Bird.
Catch you in the front this time.
My brothers. Thanks, y'all. I love y'all. I love y'all. I didn't cry. Sitting here, we gotta be a little... Thank you, Todd.